This is Tuesday, October 7th. This is a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Wynn's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen. Holy Father, thank you for the love that you offer to us. Intercede for us to live good and holy lives that glorify you. Provide us with the wisdom to respond in love and the courage to serve others, especially those hard to love. We offer this spiritual cay to your beloved Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Up next is the approval of the minutes. I didn't see any changes. If there were any changes, they'll stand as approved, presented as approved, approved as presented. Item five is public comment. This is a time where we allow anybody to come forward and provide information or discuss any items that are not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and please state your name when you do come forward. All right, moving on to six.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution allowing the mayor to proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Public Power Week in Garden City. And this is actually a proclamation, not a resolution.
Entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve proclamation as the Public Power Week as presented.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'll read the proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas we, the citizens of Garden City, Kansas, place a high value on community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, not-for-profit electric utility and as customers and owners of our electric utility, have a direct say in utility operations and policies. Whereas the Garden City Electric Department provides our homes, businesses, schools, and social service and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and safe electricity, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service at not-for-profit rates. Whereas the Garden City Electric Department is a valuable community asset that contributes to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the Garden City Electric Department is a dependable and trustworthy institution whose local operation provides many customer protections and continues to make our community a better place to live and work. And whereas the Garden City Electric Department will continue to work to bring low-cost, safe, reliable, and sustainable electricity to community homes and businesses, just as it has since 1914, the year when the utility was created, to serve all the citizens of Garden City, Kansas. Now therefore, I, Roy Cessna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, hereby proclaim the week of October 5th through 11th to be designated Public Power Week to recognize the immense sense of pride in Garden City Electric Department and their contributions to the community and to educate customers, policymakers, and employees on the benefits of public power. And be it further resolved that our community joins hands with approximately 2,000 other public power systems in the United States, all working to build strong communities in this celebration of public power. Signed and sealed the 7th day of October, 2025, Roy Cessna, Mayor." And we'll get a picture with, do we have just?
Just three of us.
Okay. We can do that.
of the East Garden Village Public Water System and Sanitary Sewer Collection System. Fred.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On October 1st, 2025, staff received a request via email from Rob Martin, representing Western Kansas Housing LLC, formally requesting consideration from the city to assume operation of the public water supply system and sewer collection system at East Garden Village. Since its development, the infrastructure of East Garden Village has been privately operated, and East Garden Village is a full requirement customer of the city for drinking water and for sewer treatment. Mr. Martin has indicated that the regulatory requirements of operating the public water supply in particular have been challenging. East Garden Village is required by the State of Kansas to have a KDHE-certified operator to oversee monitoring and compliance of its public water supply distribution system. Currently, there are approximately 450 water service connections at East Garden Village. Before assuming the infrastructure, the city will need to investigate the infrastructure needs of the public water supply as well as those of the sewer collection system before assuming operation and ownership. This would include an inspection of the current infrastructure condition, including locations of public water supply pipes, valves, and preferences, development of a cost estimate to replace the East Garden Village Public Water Supply metering, to integrate with the city's automated metering infrastructure, and an assessment of the sewer collection system would need to be performed, including condition of manholes and sewer lift station, which is operated by East Garden Village. In addition to the infrastructure inspection, city staff also needs to understand any regulatory compliance issues that may exist at East Garden Village and what impact those compliance issues may have on the city's water or sewer utilities if the city assumes ownership of the infrastructure. Due to the nature of the East Garden Village development, infrastructure easements would need to be surveyed and established for maintenance or future improvements to the system. All of these considerations would more fully inform city staff to fully address all issues related to the petitioner's request. City staff seeks input from the governing body to determine if there's a desire to engage with the investigation required to determine the impacts of Mr. Martin's request on the city water and sewer utilities. Should the governing body choose to direct city staff to investigate the petition, professional engineering consultants, PEC, will assist the city with this investigation. Any professional services would be procured in accordance with the city's purchasing and contracting manual. In other words, if the expenses related to this investigation exceed $50,000, staff will bring this to the governing body for approval. If directed by the governing body, information gathered from the process will inform the negotiation of an agreement with Western Kansas Housing LLC for consideration of the governing body at a future meeting. Alternatives available for the governing body. The governing body may choose to permit city staff to investigate the potential acquisition of East Garden Village Public Water Supply and Sewer Collection System from Western Kansas Housing LLC. The governing body may choose to decline the petition from Mr. Martin to assume operation and maintenance of the East Garden Village Public Water System and Sanitary Sewer Collection System. Or the governing body may choose to provide alternate direction to staff regarding this issue. Staff does not have a recommendation regarding the request from Western Kansas Housing LLC. Fiscal note, if the governing body chooses to approve the petition, the water and sewer departments would incur engineering expenses for the assistance required to evaluate the request. This information will further inform the governing body of the financial impact of consolidation of utilities. Professional services will be prepared according to the city's purchasing and contracting manual, and then the letter from Mr. Martin is attached with the reference.
Any questions for Fred?
So Fred, right now, there is no data to kind of collect to see what that would do to our systems right now, to kind of compare.
So in terms of like the impact regarding the utilities providing water or treating wastewater, we're already doing that. The questions are more related to the infrastructure. We know that the metering system would likely need to be fully upgraded to comply with our system, not only in terms of what type of meters are installed, but the age of the meters and how well they're working. In addition, we'd also want to check the condition of valves, hydrants. We don't believe that there have been a lot of infrastructure issues, but we think it would be good due diligence to take a look at the system. From the sewer side, we haven't been into that system to determine if they have any collection issues, if there's blockages, broken pipes, manholes in need of repair, or the condition of the lift station. And the lift station is probably the biggest item on the sewer collection system to determine the condition of that infrastructure and how it's performing.
Fred, staff has done kind of back-of-the-napkin revenue estimates based on the number of utility customers and what we know about the, what we know about usage. Since we're a wholesale supplier, we know what that is on an aggregate level. And then, you know, as you mentioned, the number of accounts, the assumptions then on the sewer level. So from a, you know, leaving out that piece of the uncertainty of the collection systems and the internal distribution systems and anything that might be necessary, and presuming we'd have to replace 100% of the meters, which I think is a fairly safe bet, what's kind of that back-of-the-napkin math look like? Projected annual revenue to both utilities and what of that would get absorbed by just replacing all the meters? If you remember.
I think we had budgeted about only $500 per connection for, for year upgrades, assuming there's no other things to address. I think the rough, the rough math on the water side would be probably about a $600,000 benefit over a five-year period. However, there probably would be somewhat of a revenue, a potential revenue decline on the wastewater utility because one of the thoughts is instead of having that as a full service, like a commercial customer, where they have one meter, one sewer connection, having individual services is where that financial benefit comes from on the water side. But the average usage is we probably would see a slight decline in revenue on the wastewater side, again, due to the way that those are calculated. And I could provide more information in the future if the governing body chooses to move forward.
And the 12, or the 2,500 per 450 accounts, if that budget were to hold true, is a little over a million, one annual projected revenue, net revenue increase on the water side would be around 600,000. So you presume the first couple of years might make up your difference? Or is that gross revenue?
I'm sorry, that's gross revenue.
Okay.
Over five years.
Oh, 670 gross revenue over five years. So part of the analysis, I think that the commission, you know, obviously the revenue side and expense side would be part that's baked into a study. If it comes back to you, you should decide to move forward. I don't think the commission has enough information, probably from a staff perspective, to say yes now. It's, you know, whether or not you want to move forward with the investigation or if you would, at this point, wholesale decline, decline that. There are available, additional available spaces in East Garden Village, hoping to build out as part of the program that the City Commission authorized earlier in the year. So the potential of that increasing by a couple hundred customers out there, too. If we do a study or do the investigation, we'll kind of do a low side existing number of units and a high side with full development, too, so that you'd be aware, fully aware of what the potential might be for the utility.
And so just for a little bit of clarity for the potential alternate, one would be to choose, to permit the city staff to investigate the potential acquisition of East Garden Village Public Water Supply and Sewer Collection Systems. Does that incur the cost of PEC's bid, or is, are we getting an estimate from them for these services to continue before?
If the governing body directed us to move forward, we would reach out to PEC and ask them for a task order.
Okay.
And we would, if, we would review that task order, and based on the amount of that task, then we would either move forward through our purchasing policy.
Yeah.
Or bring it back to the governing body.
Okay. And that's, that's a good question, and I would say alternative one, as written and as interpreted by me, would be if that investigation, if the commission wanted to investigate that, and it was under $50,000, we would move forward with the investigation. If it was over 50,000, we'd bring it back to you because it's beyond my purchasing threshold. But if the commission's like, if the commission's more of the mind of, we want to know what that cost is regardless, before we move forward with this incurring cost of this investigation of a private system, bring back the PEC work order, no matter, no matter what, we could, we would certainly do that.
Okay. I mean, I wouldn't mind investigating to see what's there. I mean, the community's growing into that. I mean, we're growing kind of around, around that area anyway, and, I mean, eventually down the road, we'll probably have to take it over at some point, so probably wouldn't hurt to find out what's there and see what they've got. Because eventually, we'll have to, probably more than likely, as the community keeps growing that way, we'll probably have to take it over at one, some point, so. Any other questions or comments, concerns? Entertain a motion on this item.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion because I just, I feel like we're not, we're not here to say no quickly, I guess. It's kind of what, where my thought process is, is I think I'd want to give the opportunity first, if we have more information, to investigate further on making an informed decision rather than just saying no. So my, I guess my, my suggestion would be to choose to permit city staff to investigate the potential acquisition of the East Garden Village Public Water Supply and Sewer Collection Systems from Western Kansas Housing LLC. So alternative one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item?
So for me, I'd like to see it brought back, even if it's under the threshold of city managers, in the purchasing contract manual. So that is kind of what I would like to see, even if it's under 50,000, to see what it would cost. So I, with that motion, I wouldn't have to vote against unless, you guys have any thoughts?
That's fine. I'd like to see what, what the cost is, keep it open and transparent on what's happening with it. That's fine with me. That's fine with the consensus of the rest of the commission.
Well, we'd have to take a, an action on this motion first.
So you're, you're saying elaborate a little bit more on the alternative one?
Yeah.
So go to number, basically a number three if this one dies, and we'll kind of suggest. Okay.
Your other option could be?
Or we could just direct staff to update us on the ongoing research and investigation on where they're at and what it's going to cost, and bring that back to us. I mean, we can just direct staff to do that, can't we? I don't think we have to make it into a motion, right?
I, I think if we're spending money in that regard, and there's, there's a request to deviate from the purchasing manual, then I think that would be good. Your options would be to, you know, run the motion and second and see where that lands, see if that is three votes. Your other option could be if the person who made the motion wanted to amend their motion to include what Commissioner Wynn had previewed as his desire, and the second was willing to amend their second, to still second that, you could change the motion right now.
We'll just go ahead and revise the motion to include, so, so the original motion was to, the governing body may choose to permit the city staff to investigate the potential acquisition of the East Garden Village Public Water Supply and Sewer Collection Systems from Western Kansas Housing LLC, with the, with the investigation being brought back to the City Commission for approval on a, on an amount.
We would be, we would bring back the professional service work order.
Yep.
From PEC.
Task order. Yeah, task order from PEC. Okay.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on that revised motion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Item 6B, oh no, that was 6B.
C.
Hang on, I gotta redo my notes, or this will be really bad later. Sorry. Item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider a request from Eric Siena-Tiempo on behalf of the Appliance and Furniture Mart for a waiver to the parking requirements and temporary structural requirements to allow for a tent from September 24th through October 12th, 2025, at 1117 Fleming Street to hold a tent and sidewalk sale. Ceylan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. On October 6th, 2025, Appliance and Furniture Mart submitted a special event request asking for a waiver of the parking requirements and a temporary structure. The sale event has been taking place since September 27th without the required waiver from the commission, which makes it a zoning violation. Staff reached out to the business on the morning of October 6th, 2025, to notify them of the violation and to notify them of the process. The fine for a zoning violation includes a $90 court fee and a starting rate of $50 per day violation, with the potential to increase up to $500 per day per violation if not corrected. This sale has been an ongoing event for at least the past 10 years and occasionally submitted requests late. In 2024, a special meeting of the City Commission was required to consider a last-minute request for approval. One other non-related item was included on that agenda, just as a note. If approved, it would put the sale into compliance and allow the event to continue with proper authorization. The alternative before you, the governing body may approve the waiver to the parking requirements and temporary structure. Two, the governing body may approve the waiver and direct staff to cite the applicant for the zoning violations from September 27th to October 6th. Three, the governing body may deny the request and order the temporary structure removed. Or four, the governing body may deny the request and direct staff to cite the applicant for the zoning violations for each day the property has been violating. Staff has no recommendation. You'll have attached the email from Eric and the special events request from Eric, and Eric and Heather are both here if you have any questions for them and if they would like to come up and speak to the governing body.
Hello. I'm Siena-Tiempo, president of the Appliance and Furniture Mart. So again, it was brought to my attention actually yesterday, the city contacted me. This is the first year, we've been doing it for about 20 years. We do it twice a year during the spring and fall, and this one was completely my fault. I, I just completely forgot to apply for the permit at this point in time. And then when they contacted me, I said we would get the free appliance pretty quick. Kind of a little background on this, you know, how it works. It's, it's a moving target date wise, just because of, this year's been a little challenging because of terrorists, and not only that, getting product in. And when we finally came up with a date, we bring in about three truckloads of appliances, a truckload of mattresses, and a truck, actually two truckloads of upholstery. And on top of that, we're getting ready to celebrate our 50th anniversary. So we, I have a lot of things going on my plate. It was my responsibility to do that. I completely missed it. So that's what happened. When she notified me yesterday, we wanted to get back a different appliance. So that's a little, kind of what happened in this situation.
Any questions for Ceylan or Eric? Entertain a motion on this item.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Ceylan, I'm very curious. I'm just curious to how much the citation would cost. I'm just curious.
That's what we're actually working out with the legal, but the 90-day court cost, and then it could be $50 today, up to 500, I believe. But we're still.
It's a little complicated.
It's up to 500 per violation, so it depends on how you charge this violation. If you charge it as one whole violation, or if you charge it by the day and you want to give him a violation for every single day, then each one of those individual citations could be up to $500.
Eric, I appreciate you coming, and I recognize that we can get busy, but from the last tent sale, there was kind of a last-minute push to. Is that correct?
Correct. And I think we're going to try and do better in the future. The problem is, is organizing all the product to hit at a specific time and emptying it and filling a tent. So it takes a little bit of organization of suppliers, and that's where it's, it's a little challenging.
Yeah.
But it's a big event for us. It brings in customers from Maroon, Colorado, Haverford, Colorado. It's about 90, 200 hours. So it's worth it for us. It's a lot of work.
Any other questions? I don't have any.
Eric, this is probably pertinent to the issue before the commission, which is the waiver, but I'm thinking in future years, you know, I, the, to avoid this happening again, and to get it to the point where the commission's consideration could happen in advance and not, and not last minute or holding special meetings, if you know you're going to do two a year at the start of the year, you could ask for the periods of time. You know how long these events last, you know, for whatever they are, 10 days, 14 days, with the specific dates to be worked out administratively, but generally, they would be, you know, your special events form that would go before the commission, your waiver form that would go before the commission, would identify a window of days between, let's say, March and April, or April and May, and then a window of days between September and October. And then those dates could be administratively provided, once you knew them, back to the city clerk's office. I think that would be acceptable and consistent with what the code requires. Now, that's still, I mean, that can't, those dates can't be given, yeah, after the week, after the event's been going on for a week, but I think as long as those were well enough in advance to handle all the administrative tasks, that that would be, that would be a better practice, because clearly what's happening now isn't, isn't working.
Would a window of 45 days, maybe we can narrow it down? Would that help, or?
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm open to, I'm open to what that might look like, and that would have to go, that would still have to go before the City Commission. They would approve something, they would ultimately approve something that they were comfortable with and not approve something they were uncomfortable with, but, you know, I think we can. But, you know, I think we can, you know, one, get this down to doing once a, once a year that handles both events. And two, give you some flexibility to where you're not, you know, you know, I don't know what day you knew you were going to do this sale, starting September 27th, but if that's like, if that's something that's last minute on you and we would happen to have our last regular meeting of the month before your event started, you know, 10 days earlier and that wasn't soon enough for, for you to know the details, that would be a, that would provide a solution. If that, if that's the problem.
We could, we could make that work. I could, I could kind of, if I had a little larger window, I could definitely make it to where people work with suppliers.
So I do have a question on alternate two, where it states that the applicant, I guess would be cited for the zoning violations for September 27th through the October 6th. What does that incur, what's that amount? Is that just the court cost?
I think that's the same question that Jennifer answered, that-
Okay, that's-
It depends on the interpretation of one violation or multiple violations. If a day is a violation or if the event itself was a violation.
Exactly.
I would say that one big thing our city commission seems to be proud of in the past is to offer some leniency to promote local businesses to, to a certain degree. And I think for myself, I would like to make the motion to approve the waiver to bring parking requirements, waiver to the parking requirements and temporary structure with staff to write a letter outlining that, what good solutions that could be for the next time around.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
All second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item?
Can you repeat that motion?
Yeah, so I'll turn of one with in addition to staff writing a letter outlining a better procedure for their next event.
Any other discussion on that item, on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Items 7A and 7B, or 7A is a staff report, I guess monthly sales tax report. 7B is communications from Cox regarding lineup changes pursuant to their franchise agreement with the city. And then 7C, Mayor Cessna and County Chairman Schultz received a response to the May 14th letter that they sent to the Secretary of Transportation requesting that there be a project to update, reevaluate, and/or expand the 2005 U.S. 400 corridor concept report as it pertains to that portion of the U.S. 400 corridor west of the Garden City Regional Airport and interacting with U.S. 5400 West, U.S. 83 North, and the local street network. KDOT has agreed to meet with local officials to better understand the need and discuss next steps. So we were grateful to receive that letter. I think we've, I think in several conversations over the past several years with KDOT, we've expressed that need. But if there is a increment of understanding yet to be achieved that we can help close that gap with KDOT officials, we're glad, glad to do that. I will, this will segue into meetings of note a little bit because I'd like to add and put on not just your radar, but anybody listening that has an interest, which hopefully is quite a few people. October 14th in Liberal, Kansas is the KDOT Local Consult Meeting for this region. There's also one in Colby on October 15th. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be wholly inappropriate to have attendance at that one if the 14th doesn't work, but largely our district is going to be the focus of October 14th. And so transportation project interests are discussed, evaluated, and prioritized by participants in those meetings. We encourage your attendance. The meeting will start at 9:00 AM and last until about noon. Because KDOT officials will be migrating from Liberal after that event's over to Colby to do the same thing the next day, I've offered up to KDOT officials, mayor, and for Chairman Schultz, and then mostly city and county staff to begin working on the whole, the meeting requested in that letter to better understand the need for the project. So hopefully all the right players, I believe all the right players on KDOT's side of the house will be in the region and they'll be moving through Garden City at some point that afternoon anyway. So I've asked, asked them to stop by and potentially have that, the meeting that they requested in that letter next Tuesday afternoon. So I'll keep, keep everyone posted on that. The October 14th morning meeting in Liberal and the October 15th morning meeting in Colby are all open to the public. Our working meeting with KDOT officials wouldn't be. All right, any questions over, comments over the sales tax report or the letter in 7C or comments on the meetings of note?
Any comments? No? Okay.
Sweet. We're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be appropriation ordinance number 2596-2025A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2596-2025A.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the annexation of property owned by Fannie County and leased to Kansas State University. If approved, it would be ordinance number 3026-2025.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Back on February 4th, 2025, following a joint city-county meeting in, at that January in the fairgrounds, the City of Garden City annexed two tracts of K-State, Kansas State University, KSU property, along with an electrical substation that belonged to the city and portions of K-156. With the annexation of the KSU property, this house, the south half of East Mary Street, that was adjacent to the KSU property, came into the city boundaries. In addition, in an attempt to clean up what roads and streets the city is to maintain, and what is the county's responsibility, the city agreed to work with the county on annexing the county property that is currently leased to KSU as the north half of Mary Street is part of the county property. On September 15th, 2025, the Fannie County Commissioner, Commissioner granted permission and consent to the annexation of Fannie County property, commonly known as the K-State Research Station. That document is attached to the memo. This property is already being certified to Garden City Water Distribution System, has the necessary sanitary public sewer systems. And if the governing body approves this annexation today, then city staff will begin the process of working with the electric cooperative incorporated as required by KSA 66-1 on the 176 as to who will be the electric retail service provider for that property annex. There's a map attached that shows where that property is at. The governing body may approve the ordinance as presented, or the governing body may choose not to approve the ordinance. Under a fiscal note, if approved today, the fiscal impacts the City of Garden City would include any additional expenses associated with the police department as it normally would, it's a normal activity with this property, becoming part of the City of Garden City and not responsibility of Fannie County Sheriff. In addition, the north half of Mary Street from the Chapel Heights Residential Subdivision east of Farmland Road will become the responsibility of the street department of the city to maintain. The south half of this section of Mary Street is already in the city boundaries and maintained by the city. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions for Mike? Entertain a motion on ordinance 3026-2025.
I move to approve ordinance number 3026-2025 as presented.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the annexation of property owned by Chapel Heights LLC. If approved, this would be ordinance number 3027-2025. Mike?
Mayor Commissioner, this is in the same general area that we just discussed, but when the Chapel Heights subdivision was plat, initially under Phase 1 of the development plan, a portion of Mary Street, the south half was excluded from that plat. The City of Garden City owns the north half of this section of Mary Street, and it was previously annexed into the city boundaries of a portion of the K, Kansas Department of Transportation's property that was adjacent to K-156. If approved today by the governing body, all of Mary Street from Jane Barker Road east to Farmland Road would be inside the city boundaries and the responsibility of maintaining this road would be the City of Garden City's. Chapel Heights LLC consents to, consents to the annexation of this property into the city boundaries. And there's a map also, the same map that shows the blue, the dark blue line that says south Mary, Mary Street, south half, that's, that's what we're talking about here. So your alternatives, the governing body may approve this ordinance as presented, or the governing body may not approve the ordinance. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance as presented. And the fiscal note is that the impact to the City of Garden City passing this ordinance will be the responsibility of the maintenance of Mary Street, which, just for a note, we already filed it anyway in the winter time, so it cleans up the questions between the city and the county at that fair mission.
Mike?
Yes?
Do we not have the same scenario that we're remedying in 10B created again with our action in 10A?
No, when the, the south part there where the cursor is-
Yes.
Was annexed into the city, it took the south half-
Okay.
And then the one that the commission just approved before that takes in the north half of it.
All right. So we've got it all the way to Farmland Road?
Yes.
Both halves, all right.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Mike on this item? Entertain a motion for ordinance 3027-2025 then.
I'll move to approve number, ordinance number 3027-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town's getting bigger.
Yes, it is. 304H.
Yeah.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider a waiver of the zoning regulations, section 7.040 at 301 East Santa Fe Drive. If approved, this would be resolution number 3210-2025.
Good afternoon, Berlin Johnson. On behalf of the property owner, RJ Rensselaar LLC, is requesting a waiver of section 7.040 of the zoning regulations to allow a two-family dwelling with separate electric, gas, and water meters at 301 East Santa Fe Drive. The property is owned by a three multifamily residential. In 2011, a building remodel was issued in addition to the existing structure. This addition was intended for the property owner's business office and garage that included separate facilities. It was not originally accessible from the main home, but instead through a separate exterior door. Since its construction, the addition is going to be used for a residential and office purpose by the property owner. In May 2025, the owner received another inventory model that modernized, modernized several rooms within the home. The property, excuse me, the zoning regulations permitted remodeling of non-conforming residential structures as so long as the degree of non-conformance is not increased. Because separate facilities already existed, the firm was issued. At that time, the property owner also requested separate utility meters for each portion of the structure. This request was denied as separate utilities were not already in place and the lot did not meet the minimum size requirements for a duplex. The zoning regulations require a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet for construction or conversion of a duplex. The lot at 301 East Santa Fe is approximately 7,500 square feet in size. Minimum lot standards are intended to ensure parking requirements can be met and to regulate lot coverage and density. If fully converted to a duplex, the property would be required to provide at least four parking spaces. Based on the existing curvy length, this requirement can be met with additional room for service parking if desired. Current improved surfaces cover approximately 60% of the lot, leaving roughly 750 square feet before reaching the maximum lot coverage of 70% allowed in the zoning district. The Garden City comprehensive plan does not assess property as mixed-use potential, recommending densities between 12 and 40 ton units per acre. By contrast, the zoning regulations' minimum lot size requirement for a duplex of approximately, allows a density of approximately 10.9 ton units per acre. The present staff report states approximately 5 ton units per acre, but to clarify, the density is 10.9. At 7,500 square feet, the density is approximately 11.6 ton units per acre. There's a clarification there as well. Staff are aware of a similar request presented to the governing body. If the request is approved, a building permit will be required for our technical utility meters. And there are two alternatives. The governing body may approve the waiver request, or the governing body may not approve the waiver request. And staff recommends approval of the waiver request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So it's really kind of just barely on the outside of the regulation is why it's coming before us. Okay. Any questions?
And that's, yeah.
Go ahead.
That's the only thing that's hindering is the, pretty much everything that's listed in here can be accomplished by one way or another. It's just the 70, or the 500 square foot. So is there a variance? Because I know there's one in the single housing units that have a variance if properties were built before a certain date. That would allow a 20% decrease in that. Is there something similar in that?
Not for this zoning district, that would only be in the R2 single housing zoning district.
Okay. And it's on a corner lot?
Any other questions? Entertain a motion for resolution 3210-2025 then.
I move to approve resolution number 3210-2025.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a ditch crossing agreement with the second drainage district of Fannie County, Kansas. Mike?
Back on October 23rd of 2023, the Kansas Department of Transportation notified the City of Garden City that it could proceed with a project titled Garden City East Side Pedestrian Pathway Sidewalk Expansion and Improvement cost share project. The total cost of the project is $2,592,000 with KDOT share being $1.5 million and the city's share being $1,92,000. Part of the project called for a pedestrian bridge to cross over Drainage Ditch Number Two located in the proximity of East Mary Street and the Chapel Heights subdivision. City staff and the city attorney's office worked with the Board of Directors of the Second Drainage District of Fannie County to obtain the necessary agreement to cross over Drainage Ditch Number Two. That agreement is before you today and outlines the responsibilities of both the City of Garden City and the Board of Directors of the Second Drainage District of Fannie County. If approved today by the governing body, no additional agreements will be required for the pedestrian bridge to cross over Drainage Ditch Number Two. The alternative is the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the Drainage Ditch Crossing Agreement between the City of Garden City and the Second Drainage District of Fannie County, or the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. The recommendation is that staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. The only fiscal note would be whatever it would cost us to file the agreement with the Register of Needs in Fannie County. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mike? Entertain a, oh, go ahead.
I'm curious on why the, so the red line kind of indicates the pathway of the, of the sidewalk. I'm just curious why it wouldn't, gonna follow that road down to the intersection of-
I'm just curious why it wouldn't, gonna follow that road down to the intersection of.
Which one is this, Commissioner?
Or is that not?
Yeah, which picture?
One of one?
The first one?
Okay, so, yeah, it would have been the first one, but.
Yeah, that's, there's two, actually, two bridges that go in this project.
Okay, okay. I'm probably ahead of you, sorry.
Okay, yeah.
This is just for the pedestrian.
The one that you're pointing to, side number two, is the bridge that this agreement would cover.
Okay.
And then that sidewalk that would be disrupted actually comes back down and ties into Jenny Barker Road sidewalk as well.
Okay, all right. Good. No, that's okay, I was probably ahead of you on pictures. Sorry.
Any other questions for Mike? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the ditch crossing agreement between the City of Garden City and the Second Drainage District of Fannie County.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. The governing body is asked to consider, I'm sorry, this is 12B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a temporary waiver from section 62-6 and section 38-86 of the Code of Ordinances to allow one parking stall to be utilized for the complimentary use of the Main Street Food and Brew Hall. Danielle.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Main Street Food and Brew Hall is requesting a waiver to section 62-6 of the Code of Ordinances, which prohibits any person from being present upon any municipally-owned parking lot in of the city between the hours of 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM daily. And section 38-86 of the Code of Ordinances, which prohibits the storage of any non-motorized item of personal property not attached to a motor vehicle on any municipal parking lot. This would be a temporary waiver for six months, allowing them to park a commercial smoker in the parking lot as an extension of the Main Street Food and Brew Hall and monitor the smoker while it is in use. Currently, the commercial smoker is located in the alley while in use, which makes it difficult for solid waste vehicles to make it through the alley to empty the dumpsters. During the six-month period, staff will work with the Main Street Food and Brew Hall to find a long-term solution, bring that back to the governing body for consideration prior to the conclusion of the six-month period. During this time, staff will also monitor the impacts of the waiver to determine long-term viability. Staff are aware of one, other similar request from a downtown business a number of years ago, and there are three alternatives before you. One, the governing body may approve the six-month waiver. Two, the governing body may not approve the six-month waiver. Or three, the governing body may provide staff with alternative direction. Staff recommends approval of the six-month waiver, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for Danielle?
Yes, so Danielle, so when you say monitor the impacts of the waiver determining long-term viability, what happens after? Is it just going to be a change in ordinance, a change in, yeah, I guess what would happen after if it's okay that it's there?
Yeah, so we will take a look over the next six month, over the last six months, over the next six months, excuse me, for our parking requirements, there may be some changes and modifications that we may bring before you all to consider. We also may bring forward a request and a recommendation to you all to make this waiver a permanent solution while this particular business is operating within the Food and Brew Hall. So there's a couple of different options, but we wanted to go back and do our due diligence. We were made aware of this, and so we wanted to get something before you rather quickly because the way that they were operating was not currently within our code, so we wanted to give them a mechanism to be able to continue operating their business, but do that in a way that gets that smoker a little bit further away from the building. That was something that we wanted to look at as well. There is some space kind of down by the back of that building, but we don't want the smoker that close to the structure. So we wanted to bring this before you, understanding that it is in derivaletion of our current zoning regulations. So yes, we will look at a wide variety of different options to bring that back to you in the next six months before this waiver expires, but it very well could be that we continue to recommend a waiver for this particular instance, but we will look at how we can raise a little bit more in depth before we do that.
Gotcha.
Well, and I appreciate you guys' efforts in looking into this. I mean, there's just that level of kind of, let's do some research, let's get back with you, we'll kind of give you an option later on, so I appreciate the work that you guys have done leading up to this, so. I'm okay with approving the waiver as, where am I at? I keep getting lost, I'm sorry, guys.
12B.
12B.
You're wanting to approve the six-month waiver?
Yes. Alternative one, governing, approve the six-month waiver.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the six-month waiver. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
It's, because half of it's on one sheet and the other half's.
Right, yeah.
12C is, I think, a response to interest expressed by Commissioner Ortiz, also could be folded into the kind of overarching community goal or governing body goal of youth engagement, but I think you heard a really good update of some of the other activities that have been going on with regard to youth engagement at our town hall meeting from Mrs. Bernfin and what we'll be doing with her class this Thursday, as a matter of fact, and then we'll be checking out one of your commission meetings here in the, in the near future. This other idea actually took our, would take our show on the road, and I've been visiting with Principal Ryan Ming, who's been back in touch with me and has indicated that they would be able to accommodate a December 2nd. We had him look at two dates, the other one's in November, but I'm afraid that's a little bit too close, and there's the risk of some things that may have been scheduled and notice given out for meetings here at 301 North Eighth, that we'd want to make sure any notices that we had to put out showed the, showed the correct address. But if the governing body has an interest in moving a city commission meeting to Garden City High School Auditorium, the high school is willing to accommodate that on December 6th. So the business item is, does a majority of the commission want to move one of our regularly scheduled meetings to this alternative location? I will say, once we, once you decide that, we will do our best to try to make the live broadcast and recorded broadcast as close to the same quality as we can now, but that isn't a guarantee. I think the live is probably going to be limited to Facebook, I would have to check with our communications folks. Recorded could be made available to Channel 8 and our YouTube channel, but I think we may be limited to one source and probably one camera angle, so limited visibility on kind of who's talking when. And we'll do our best, there is fantastic audio in the high school auditorium. It's whether or not that audio lends itself to doing a city commission meeting and then coming through whatever apparatus we're recording on Facebook Live. That, that may be compromised a little bit. And just, just so the commission's fully aware, we have not vetted that, we've simply checked the availability of the, of the venue. Venue's available with, with a little bit of a plan as to, that would need to be a more robust plan of where do we expect people to park, anybody that, you know, needs accessibility to the room, how do they get there, where do they park? So we can, we can work out those communication pieces, but it's available and up to you to discuss whether or not that's something that you want us, a change we want to make, and then we would begin devoting the staff work to it.
I think it's a great idea. I'm a huge fan of this, so.
Yeah, I love the fact that we're just meeting people where they're at versus having them and relying on them to come to us a lot of times, so I appreciate the work that, you know, media is going to be something difficult, but I'm, I'm pretty confident in them, they can work their magic.
Commissioner Langrass.
Yeah, I'm a huge fan of this as well. I think it's a great idea, being able to be out in front of the high school, so in my favor of it.
And I agree, I think it meets one of our goals of engaging youth, and the presentation by Mrs. Bernfin, I think, really highlighted what they're doing at the high school and engaging students there, and then, I think, meeting on their home turf. And I know there's another community that they actually do this once a year, they actually have a commission meeting at their high school in front of the whole high school.
Yeah.
Which could be kind of a big event for us, but I think this would be just open to students that are interested in coming and viewing the event, so I'm in favor of it as well. So entertain a motion on this item then.
So moved.
It's been moved that we approve the change of location for the December 2nd regular city commission meeting to be moved to the Garden City High School Auditorium at 2720 Buffalo Way. Is there a second?
A second.
And there is a second, any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you. That takes care of the new business items, we're ready for the consent agenda. Commissioner Ortiz has requested separately discussing 13E. Are there any other items that anybody would like to remove and discuss separately? Otherwise, the appropriate motion would be to approve the consent agenda 13A through D and F through K.
I move to approve, sorry.
I just wanted to ask right quick, I always, we have to kind of do that now, just if there's anybody from the community on any of the items for the environmental items that are on the consent agenda. None being?
Thank you.
I move to approve consent agenda items 13A through 13D and 13F through 13K.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you. Item 13E, the governing body has asked to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Hutton Corporation for replacing two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo. Kristy.
I'm coming.
She's coming.
Good afternoon. Replacing two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo is needed due to the deteriorating condition of the two coolers and their impact on zoo operations. The project was budgeted and put out to bid twice. The first time, July 17, 2025, no bids were received. The second time, August 26, 2025, one bid was received. During the September 16, 2025 city commission meeting, commissioners awarded the bid for replacing the two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo to Hutton Corporation. Before you are two alternatives, the governing body may authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Hutton Corporation for replacing the two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo. For number two, the governing body may not authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Hutton Corporation for replacing the two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo and provide staff with further guidance. Recommendation, zoo staff recommend authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Fiscal note, the project will be paid for utilizing funds that have been earmarked and set aside in the capital improvement reserve for zoo projects. The TL that will be used is zoo repairs 302001006606. Ready for any questions?
I just wanted to kind of, I mean, I'm, we did approve this last, you know, a couple of meetings ago, and I wanted to make sure that everyone understood where I was coming from on this, and that I still don't agree with moving forward with this item because I feel, I feel strongly that it's something that could have been handled in maintenance and not going out for bid, but that's just, I still do not approve of this contract, so that's where, that's where I stand. I mean, I, I believe in being transparent and saving the taxpayers' dollars as best we can, and this was, and it's a small project, but I feel it could have been a lot better.
Any other questions for Kristy or comments? Entertain a motion on item 13E then. I make the motion we authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Hutton Corporation for replacing the two walk-in coolers at Lee Richardson Zoo.
I second.
Is there second, it's been seconded by Commissioner Nguyen, any other discussion on this item? It is critical need, I know last, at the last meeting you were talking about, there is quite a bit of buildup of mold and it's not sealed correctly, and it's just, it's just, it needs to be replaced for the, for the product that we are holding in, in the freezer, or the coolers, right?
Yes, it's already been the point of a directed inspection by USDA. It means they came specifically to look at that, and recently when we had a three-year inspection, the first question out of our inspector's mouth was, have those been reviewed?
Okay. Any other questions or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
That item passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to.
That takes care of, yeah, all the business items, we're ready for commissioner reports.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Yeah, so a couple weeks back, I was able to be at the airport for the airport simulation, and what a joy that was. I think I messed up in my role, but I think it was really exciting to see how great we worked together, but also that everyone had really good desire to get better, and I think that was very clear that everyone wanted to get better, and that was really good. Fall Fest was so fun, so exciting, always so good to hear young people say, I wish we had more events like this throughout the year, because it means that they love what is already here in Garden City and they want more of it. And then I also got to attend Jared Hornbaker's wedding, what a joy that was, so congratulations to Jared and IT, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, so this, appreciate everything that we discussed this morning in our pre-meeting from staff kind of delivering that information on some changes that are needed that haven't been revised for some over 10 years, and so some of those costs and services that we provide for citizens here, it's, it needs to go up, and so that's, that's a good transparency document that we can have to kind of share with everybody moving forward. I did, I did attend Fall Fest and it was very busy, so that was, that was pretty amazing. I do appreciate the town hall meeting though, too, that was, a lot of people that, that's probably the most crowded people that I've seen here for a town hall meeting since I've been on, and so I appreciate Shannon bringing his team of robotics here and discussing their, the things that they do and how they keep their kids engaged in some of those robotic programs and how they travel and compete across the world, pretty much. And then Mrs. Bernfin on her outreach with their, with her youth students too, and how they're engaged in city, city work, city government work, and kind of showcasing to her students on, on what they can achieve in their own futures as far as leadership goes, and so it's important for us to kind of guide them and give them those, answer those questions that they may have, so I appreciate her bringing that up and then continuing with the, moving forward, and then also us looking at a meeting there at the high school as well, so that's, that's pretty exciting. So I appreciate everyone's work with that and look forward to hearing more and doing great things, so thank you.
Commissioner Langrass.
So I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet so I don't have another coffee spell, but I greatly appreciate the pre-meeting, I think it's really great being able to do that, especially the transparency that that document's going to allow. Also, just wanted to say thank you to staff for all the effort and work they put into that document as well. And also, it was great being able to see everyone at Fall Fest, thank you.
Just wanted to mention that I did do the welcome at the recent Kansas Association of Airports, so is here in Garden City. Got the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference coming up this week that'll be held in Overland Park. State of the City is next week, so kind of a full slate. Fall cleanup is still taking place here in the community, so just make sure that you put your items out next to the curb, don't put it in the curb, but next to the curb so they can pick those items up. A lot of things happening, we, I saw and saw the notice of that they're closing Third Street, that's going to be north of the cemetery to get that, that little section there widened and updated up to the bypass area, so just wanted to mention that to let everybody know that that's happening, if you haven't already seen that in a number of our posts that have gone out. If you haven't already seen that in a number of our posts that have gone out. I think that's everything that I have for comments. Anything else before we adjourn the meeting?
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.